Uh, get your attention please. Welcome to the Town of New Paltz Planning Board meeting of August 24th, 2015. Up on the agenda is the... First is a review of the minutes of July 27th. Have a motion to accept the minutes. Second. Any comments, discussions? All those in favor? Okay. We're going to public hearings. Couple of notes bear in mind. The meeting is being trans... Public hearing, at least at CBS, is being transcribed. I'd ask you to give me a name and where do you live when you get up and talk. I'd ask you also to fill out the sheet on the side so I know who to call, when to call. And, but first up, we have LP Builders, public hearing. Have a motion to open the public hearing on LP Builders. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The only thing I've received, just for everybody's information on LP Builders, is I did get an email today, actually Kelly got it today, from a engineering firm that is doing work for LP Builders. And on behalf of the applicant, I request an extension of time so our firm can get up to speed on the application. I request Planning Board consider granting a two-month extension on the application. The board will discuss the length of time we'll allow on that application, when we do it. I don't have anything new to report. I haven't received anything from the applicant. So, does anybody want to talk on the public hearing? Podium, that way we can get the TV monitor on you.
Hi, my name is Susan Garrison. I'm with Grant Line. We have an environmental firm up in Linebeck. We represent Eric Stott and Vince Luke in this application process. As you've mentioned, it's come to our attention that length and tally have been retained by the applicant and had requested an additional two months. Not so much to submit anything new, but to review and catch up on the application. In the event that anything new is submitted, whether revised plans, documents, information, Grant Line would like to ask that you consider allowing us to fully review anything that's been submitted, allow us to comment effectively. In the event, in the interest of fairness, the applicant has asked, understood several extensions. You know, this has been going on since last November, I believe, even before that. But, you know, we'd just like to have that same consideration for us. And we just have a quick letter here just expressing our position, and we'll submit to Kelly.
Thank you.
But thank you for your time.
We will keep you posted. You'll be the second to know. Hopefully, I will be the first. Does anybody else wish to make any comments on LP Builders, that public hearing? Have a motion to close the public hearing for tonight on LP Builders. We'll discuss it under application review. All those in favor? Next up is a public hearing open on Trans Hudson CBS site plan on North Buck Corners Road. Have a motion to open the public hearing? Thank you. Peter May, I guess the second. All those in favor? Okay, first up, Tim and Tom.
My name is...
Oh, sorry. Tim Rogers.
Tom Nyquist, NYCU I S D.
So, I'm here on behalf of the Village of New Paltz Board. And Tom is here as...
Yeah, I'm representing both the Kid and I Historic Society, and I'm also the... Sir as Secretary of that, and I'm also the Chair of Nyquist Foundation. I'm here to make decisions.
So, we have a co-authored position statement speaking to the value of preserving community character. What we tried to do is reference the 1995 Townwide Master Plan, as well as some code from both the town and the village that speaks to this. I've provided this statement to Kelly, so you already have that. So, I'm not going to go through the formality of reading it tonight, but I just wanted to highlight the actual quotes from the 95 Master Plan and some of the highlights from the purpose sections of our Town and Village Code. So, long-term planning efforts to preserve our community character were highlighted in 95 in the town's comprehensive plan that was to follow. The town of New Paltz places high value on a small-town feeling and wishes to retain the character of the town while enabling responsible growth. Secondly, preserve and enhance the natural beauty and rural quality of the community and protect the small-town atmosphere of the village core. And then, in both our town and village zoning codes, we have language in the purpose sections that support our document. So, specifically from Village Code, Section 212.4. Section B, conserve and enhance property values to encourage the most appropriate uses of land in the community in order to conserve and enhance property values. Section I, preserve and enhance aesthetic and historic values to preserve and enhance the natural and man-made beauty of the community, to preserve its character of the community and to preserve local historic sites and buildings. So, here we are with town code, Section 143 in Section B, to encourage the most appropriate use of land in the community in order to conserve and enhance the value of property. C is particularly interesting as it relates to this land use application. To eliminate the spread of strip business development and provide for more adequate and suitably located commercial facilities. Section J, to enhance the aesthetic aspects throughout the entire community and maintain its present character of natural beauty. So, we strongly believe that we have something incredibly unique in the town of New Paltz, and that we have a historically designated section. We have numerous landmark buildings. We have a walkable Main Street, a university. There is a pretty extensive list, numerous, numerous privately-owned, locally-owned businesses. So, we have something very unique and special when compared to the many other communities in the U.S. And that's why we think it's very important to defend this community character. I want to let Tom chat first.
The area of particular concern to us, I think, is the area right as you enter the town of New Paltz on the thruway, and what's going to happen with that property. It's a very key gateway, not only to the town of New Paltz, but I want to remind you, but it's also a key gateway to... It's a key gateway to the Minnewaska State Park. It's a key gateway to the Mohawk Mountain House. It's a key gateway to the Mohawk Preserve. It's a key gateway to the historic Hubenot Street, which I'm representing tonight. It's a key gateway to the Walk Hill Valley rail trail. It's also important to those of us who are concerned about the Nyquist Harcourt Wildlife Sanctuary. It's also a gateway to those people who are going to events at the fairgrounds. We really are, I think, an unusual community, with all of the resources we've got here, all the beautiful scenery, attractions we have to bring people to this community. And I think it would be sad if we put the wrong kind of development at the entrance to our community. And all I'm asking is that we think about, very carefully, about what we face at that location, because we have a real responsibility as a community, and you have as a Town Planning Board. We have a real responsibility... I think we have a real responsibility to our community, both as a community and as a Town Planning Board. This is a very key piece of land, and it's also key in terms of traffic. It's an area where everything comes together. So, I just want to say, I hope you give it, I'm sure you will, a lot of thought before you make a decision what you build in that particular location.
Thank you, Tom. Thanks, Tim. David.
Hi, my name is David Porter. I'm a 546 Albany Post Road in New Paltz. I haven't been to one of these public hearings on the project yet, but I have followed it in the newspaper and on the TV coverage. And another excellent points presented urging you to review this project with a full environmental impact statement. There are a couple of areas that I don't remember hearing about, and I would want to present those to you tonight. One concerns traffic. And I'm concerned about several aspects of the traffic report that CBS presented. One is that while they have taken it upon themselves to have a certain amount of cumulative impact analysis, including the traffic from the Wildberry Lodge, they have not provided the kind of documentation for the Wildberry Lodge traffic, which is a huge potential amount, and which really needs to be looked at in detail at the same time as this project, because cumulatively, that will be a very big impact on the intersection's concern. And you can't just rely on a traffic engineer who happens to be covering both projects to go by his word about, in general, what the number of vehicles will be from that Wildberry Lodge project. You need to see the details in the same way that they've presented for this project. So, I would say that that's really an important piece to include, which is not, and which justifies asking for an environmental impact statement. A second thing is that I think the intersections that were covered in their report were very limited. Clearly, a lot of this traffic is going to go up and down 299 Main Street, and all they've covered is the area right around the project itself. So, I think they really need to include intersection analysis for Cherokee Hill Intersection, Route 32 North, and further on down 32 South 208 intersection, to really get a good indication of what kind of impact cumulatively, again, is going to be coming over to Main Street in addition to all the traffic that we have right now. So, that's the cumulative impact. One other aspect about cumulative impact is, and I want to call your attention to the fact that almost 20 years ago, when Planning Board reviewed the Walmart project, which Mike well remembers, the Planning Board did authorize that included in cumulative impact analysis would be the maximum build-out for the adjacent turek, the adjacent lot next to the proposed Walmart Mega Mall. And that was recommended by an outside traffic engineer, and in very good form, the Planning Board did accept that logic, that it was important to know what the potential cumulative impact would be, even though we don't yet know what is going to be developed a little bit further north on that same corridor with CBS. But, as you know, the industrial zoning, business zoning in that area does allow for office companies, and that's the most intense kind of use, traffic-wise, for the adjacent territory. So, I would urge that that also be considered in an EIS review of traffic. The other issue has to do with economic and fiscal analysis. I do think that it's important to include a kind of marketing analysis for the CBS. It's not, obviously, just a drugstore. It's covering a whole range of other retail kinds of produce to repub, and I think it is quite possible for them to provide an indication of what they expect their relative sales will be for each major category that they're doing, and to then compare that to the market that already exists here that's being provided by the various other similar retail entities, not only the drugstores, but potentially others that might offer similar kind of produce. But clearly, the pharmaceutical realm is really important. And this is not simply to get into, well, you know, is this going to be overly competitive? Because you're not allowed to really look at that in terms of the EISs. But what you can look at is the impact of a smaller market than one which would allow various retail stores in the same category, in the same way that Walmart was analyzed 20 years ago. And that can be done by looking at those particular categories, what's offered, and what kind of consumer demand exists demographically within the New Paltz market area. And this is crucial also, given the fact that we know that Detrick's is really the anchor for that smaller shopping center at 32 North, or yeah, 32 South, that intersection with 299. And we also know that the Lineback Store is really the anchor for that mall right there. And in either case, if it's shown through the market analysis that there's a serious danger of those stores being knocked out of the New Paltz market, that creates empty storefronts, and ultimately, of course, it has an impact on the fiscal analysis for the town, because fewer tax dollars will come in if the property is vacant. So, those are the two pieces that I just wanted to point out. I hadn't heard before, which I think are important to look at in the impact of CBS, and I think an EIS is the way to do that.
Thank you, David. Susan.
Susan Blake Stelling, Daisy Boyd, L I C A S T U I N, living on Old Mill. Town of New Paltz. I'm sorry, I can't hear you though. I live on Old Mill. In Italian, Paul. I guess the first thing, I'm going to make some brief points, because really, there's been no new information provided by the applicant and nothing new posted on the town's website. And it's a little bit frustrating, because it feels like this is becoming a very repeating process, and I'm starting to wonder, at what point does the Planning Board just go ahead and pause that this and write a scope, so we can all be looking at the information that needs to be analyzed? We've raised the issue of segmentation a number of times, and I've heard the Planning Board, in your discussions, you know, speak about some issues that you wanted the applicant to address, that as far as I can see, remain unaddressed. The two most glaring ones in my mind are to get an EAF that has the third pad site, and to get a traffic study that has the third pad site, not as cumulative development, but as part of the action that you are analyzing under CECL. There are other excellent points that David raised, and I'm glad he raised them, about cumulative impacts with respect to traffic and economic analysis. And I agree with him that an EIS is really, quite frankly, the only venue that gets you to that level of comprehensiveness and detail in a study like this. But what we really are concerned about is getting the revised materials and having adequate time for concerned community to review them, for the Planning Board to be able to review them, and don't have a situation where we did, I think, a few months ago, where we had something like three or four days to review materials. And I guess what I'm asking you to consider is maybe pausing the process until that those materials that you asked the applicant to provide are submitted, and then reset the public hearing date, because otherwise, we are following along, we're spending, not that we don't like to be here, but it seems as though it's taking up the board's time and the community's time in a way that is perhaps not as productive as it could be. We also ask that you clarify, if not going to kind of push the pause button, that you clarify what the Planning Board's process will be for completing the Part II EAF and getting to the point of issuing a declaration of significance with respect to environmental impact, so that there's a little bit more predictability for us, who are following along with the process and wanting to know how best to engage with the information provided, and how to focus our comments, so that we don't come every month and say the same things to the Planning Board over and over again. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Susan. Michael.
Mike, good on?
Great, good on?
Good on, good. I'll be brief in some of the echo a little, Susan just said. But I think now in light of the sloppiness of the traffic report, the incredible sloppiness in the EAFs, and now the lack of any updated documents, I think it's been nearly two months since the last public hearing. I think it is, and now the third pad site, which he was insisted was not part of the project, but is now being actively advertised for at least that. I think it's now fair to question whether the applicant even has respect for the community and the process. It just doesn't, I don't understand why we don't now have things to work with. But, you know, I'm not going to belittle the point, I can't get inside their heads. I would just ask that, either a halt declaration should come down, or at the very least, I wouldn't mind seeing the process paused, but at the very least, we cannot, I hope we can't close the public hearing at this point, because we didn't close it at the last meeting, and there's nothing new, so I close it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Kevin.
Hi, Kevin Gordon. My partner, Theresa and I, live at Calvin Boulevard, with our sons, Mac and Finn. And Mr. Porter, it's very nice to meet you. I'm proud to say I've read your book, and it's a great public service, so really appreciate seeing you in person. And thanks again for the Planning Board. You know, not much to add, although it does feel like we're in this paradoxical situation of not having new material in front of us, so... But a number of us have been engaging residents and businesses throughout the community, in the village, and in the town. And, you know, we've raised a number of issues around the CNB, conflict of interest potential, the other items around significant, what we feel could be potential significant impacts. And our latest effort involved having close to 400 people sign comments in Congress, basically asking that the Planning Board require an EIS for this development. So, now we find ourselves with, literally, with the petition that Julie Lilis started, these comments, thousands of residents and homeowners have now weighed in and said, "Look, we want to make sure that the process is clear, and the clearest way to do that process is to require an EIS of this proposal." And I think, just to kind of talk about the door knocking a little bit, so one of the most interesting items when door knocking was myself and Mary Anderson, the back row there, we did some focused outreach in the Meadowbrook community. And, you know, it's clear, given the proximity of Meadowbrook, the development, or the proposed development, that this community finds itself literally on the doorstep of the proposed development. Like, they're the folks that are going to be the most affected by having to navigate traffic, doing back-and-forth of work, picking their kids up and dropping them off with childcare, sometimes facing some dire consequences, maybe losing employment if you're late for work, or having, being charged extra money if you can't pick up your kid on time. The other thing about that neighborhood is like, when the acres of trees come down, and the weeks of diesel trucks come by to unload dirt, it's their kids that are going to feel the greatest effects of their noise, dust, and air pollution. So, when door knocking that neighborhood, it was clear, like, that door knock on a number of community issues in a number of different states, from urban renewal plans, the farm worker minimum wage, like, nine out of 10 doors that we hit, like, voiced these concerns. And that's really unheard of. I mean, you're lucky if you get six out of 10. So, I just feel like, the only thing we wanted to add tonight is we really owe it to those families, and to the thousands that have now weighed in on this proposal, to do a full EIS. And, you know, I do think I want to echo, and also, Michael Zierler couldn't be here tonight, Julie Lilis, who just got off a long trip back from out west, really do want, again, like, it does feel like, yes, we should pause, we should get all the documents, so we're not expected to come here as community members that is kind of share the same points that we've shared in the past, because we have nothing to look at, and we really need to keep the public hearing open, and so we can actually digest those documents properly. So, again, thank you for your time. Really appreciate the Planning Board's thoughts or efforts that you do every month, and it's great to see you again.
Thank you, Kevin. Tara.
One of those. Other Latin comments, things I'm not familiar with.
Tara, you guys speak up so people can hear you.
This is as loud as I can talk.
Okay.
You don't have the microphone, that's not what matters.
Look to the audience then, and project to them.
But there are a couple of things that... One, the village, as usual, wants town taxpayers to increase their subsidies so they can keep their village the way they want it. Now, I have no problem with all these people that want their, however, they want it, this that and the other thing. My only problem is, if you want this, walk the road or whatever, pay the money, don't take the money from somebody else, which is basically what the village is asking you to do. If it wasn't for the forced subsidy from the town to the village, most of these things that the village wants to ban, business, people they don't like, you know, and everything else, wouldn't happen. And it's only because of the largest of the town taxpayers that they're able to keep what they want, that they're able to get all the services without having to pay for it. As we remember, the village is about 65% tax-exempt, and rest businesses actually pay less tax money than most town taxpayers on their property. Focus of the Planning Board should be on helping town taxpayers stay. They talk about the businesses they want to protect. They talk about the businesses they want to protect, that's a sore subject with me if you will, as a big proponent against, well, going to give it to a world research. Businesses were all for it. Think about it. Think about the millions of dollars they would have made and town taxpayers would have had to pay for it. This is the concept of people who don't have to pay taxes, you know, what we care. The, I'm not a traffic expert or whatever, but I'm listening to what I'm hearing, I don't see people going to that particular property and saying, "Oh, let's take a run through the village," just in the head. They're concerned about village businesses, I mean, businesses unfortunately, the village and town will not tax, in my opinion, the business properly so that those of us who do have to pay taxes, particularly seniors who are in the north village, they don't want to do it because of the, you know, same reason that they don't want to do anything that's going to hinder the free loader's support. But think about it, they're concerned about the economics of the village. If somebody were to come to, see if you asked them, I already expressed my reasons why I think it's a good thing for people like me, hey, you know, maybe don't go down in the village, maybe don't do like the people that come up in the summer do, go to a restaurant, go to one of the stores and spend their money. The businesses will make a fortune because they don't have to pay any additional taxes, so that's good for them. So, if you're talking about an economic development, the concept of, well, they're going to hurt the village and they go through it or whatever, I don't understand it because I really can't see somebody coming up through a, I'm not a traffic expert, but fully willing to pack for, I'm not coming, coming up through a, going to CVS to buy this car like I do, to buy it at a reasonable price as opposed to the price sticks that the businesses in the village use because they're protected from competition and the village will not allow competition. And not going to just, you know, come down there, you know, they'll come to, you know, they'll do like I do, I mean, I don't, I'm vertical shopping in New Falls because I can't afford it. I found out it's cheaper for me to drive my car to places that are cheaper, that are 100, 150% cheaper than in New Falls in the village, you know, because then, and, you know, it's cheaper even with the gas, even with everything else. And I don't like, you know, the environmental impact of it, but by the same token, we're supposed to do without medicine, supplies, equipment that someone like me needs, et cetera, because the village doesn't want any of that business, because it protects all the business. The worst part about it, I'm a big proponent of it, take whatever you want, do whatever you want. You want to have, you know, a village where you don't, where you ban cars and you ban this and you ban that, which is very big in the village, fine, just pay for it. Don't take money from somebody else so you can sit back and say, "Oh, look how wonderful, look what we did, look what we did," and hurt people like me. And I'm not talking about all seniors because as we know, the ministry loaders in the village is, and nothing gets done, they, you know, they say, "Oh, yeah, let's do this, let's do this," and it's very easy, you know, they don't have to pay taxes. You know, my taxes go up. And actually, to the point, my own thoughts in terms of commerce, imagine if the village, that 65% plus businesses who pay less, actually, and I'm not talking about a big idea, this last everybody in Cleveland about what I talk about, I talk about business tax. It's called an, it is a specific tax for businesses that use the majority of the services, like the police force. For example, suppose the town told the village and says, "Hey, you know what, we don't need a police force," and they don't, they can get along very nicely with the county and the state. Where would the village come up with $6 million if they don't have the taxpayers? So, it, it all has to do with dollars and cents. And my theory on that is if that were to happen, if the village had to pay for everything instead of sitting back and saying, "Give me, give me, give me," then maybe the village could find a way to tax the freeloaders, to find a way to tax businesses. And in that way, my taxes would theoretically go down because there would be more of a taxpayers. So, you know, that's all I'm saying, it's just a lot of this just doesn't make sense to me, what I hear. And, again, I'm, I think as other people, I want to wait to see the impact of it, the environmental impact, if you will, on the town and not on the village. Remember, this is a town planning board, and I just have one other basic comment to say before I leave, I would hope that this planning board would consider doing the same thing at the village wing or the municipal board.
I'll keep that in mind, Ira. Thank you. Does anybody else wish to make any? I can't see back that far.
My name is Ann Gordon and I'm a resident of Woodland Pond. Woodland Pond is approaching its sixth anniversary in this town. I know there is a lot of concern and consternation about it taking place at all, but it's here, we're there, and there are more than 250 of us in the active living side of Woodland Pond. We aren't, a lot of us are not on walkers, we're not in wheelchairs, we drive our own cars, we shop in New Falls. Believe me, the stores that treat us well are, their, their businesses are, names are passed among the citizens of Woodland Pond so that we say, use this auto repair place, not that one, use this jeweler, not that one, because we know where we're getting a fair deal. And we've gotten a more than fair deal from both Rite Aid and Dietrich's pharmacies in the town. They do everything they can to help us. And of course, we are responsible for a large amount of purchases of medical and other toiletries and things like that. So, we're bringing money into the town, we bring jobs into the town. Look how many local people are employed at Woodland Pond. And it seems to us, the people that I've talked to, I'm really representing only myself and my neighbors, I am not an official spokesperson in any way for the management, but it seems to us that putting this big box store with its attendant traffic and noise on our corner is going to create a hardship for us in terms of access to Putt Corners Road, I understand that the slipway will be done away with, in terms of getting out when there's a medical emergency, that's going to become even more difficult. Now, we're very fortunate that the emergency squad is just down the road, but if they come to us, they have to go somewhere else afterwards. And to have to fight their way through traffic at that intersection is going to jeopardize lives, frankly. And I'll tell you something, on a Friday afternoon, it's pretty bad just to maybe turn at that corner, or when there's a big event at the Fairgrounds. We know those things, we allow for them, we use the back roads if possible. We love living in New Falls, many of us are from other parts of the state and country, but we made our home here and we would like New Falls to continue to be the same welcoming and safe community that it has been up till now, and we consider this project not adding to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Anybody else wish to make a public, or any comment after public hearing on that? Hearing now, I have a motion to close the public hearing on Trans Hudson and CBS for tonight. Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Okay. Whether we're on the money or not on the money, we do have a public comment session generally on issues that are not, well, not as a public hearing. And, so, is anybody here wishing to make a public comment? Okay. Thank you. We'll move off into application reviews. Trans Hudson, CBS?
My stopwatch. Not very good, I could make the alarm.
You better be like, next time, I mean. Stop more. Okay.
Can I just jump in with a question when we talk about our process?
No.
Okay, I'll hold, I'll hold back. Okay, all right.
All right. Okay, so it's the last meeting, we have come up with two pieces of information to go over the board tonight, and again, we're here to answer any questions you may have, but one is we do have a revised rendering of the building, of buildings, from the different views, and Justin has those to give out to the board. We just got these, they, from the architect. And it does show the CBS building having a peaked roof over the entrance way to the building, and shows the other architectural, you know, attributes that the building had before that with the addition of the roof. All right, so we can give those out to the board and go over that. We do have a view provided from across the existing view we have before, across the Snokeville Station, looking across the corner, as well as a view coming down to 99, coming just across the bridge over the thruway and looking at the site. And then there's also a close-up of the building, as you would stand, I guess, on North Cutland, looking at the building, so you have this.
The last page shows a, kind of a close-up of the new mansard roof over the, the entryway, and also part of that entryway now is covered by this roof, named, what we got into the views, as Charlie stated.
Hey, it looks like we even have the Five Guys, Four Guys and Thighs in here.
That's correct.
The Five Guys building is in there. The Five Guys building is in there, yes.
Yeah.
So, the only architectural change since we last met is the roof?
Oh, that's correct. CBS did receive the board's letter, and from that letter, this was the addition that they proposed to the building treatment. And like I said, the last, the last page is kind of a close-up of that, that new tree. The prior elevation would continue this all the way across the front, there's no covering of the front access.
So, we're actually having photo simulation from with a leaf on and leaf off conditions? Maybe we don't have hardly any trees, but maybe we get to see the olden hardwoods?
No. Yeah, no. Were you guys able to get the view from the thruway?
The second one is what you're looking at, you kind of see, you're estimating the end of the overpass, so the bridge is right about here, so to get a perspective into that without interference.
So, is that, that's it?
No, that's just the existing photo, so you can see, just as a reference point.
Oh, so you didn't do it with the building?
Right here.
Okay, oh, that's that, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
The electricity of running along 299 in North Quarter, is going to be underground?
No, the, the poles will remain, because what it is, is that it's actually a transmission line that goes down under the thruway, so we really don't have much, that will remain just for...
But you don't have it in the middle?
Correct, so just for a clear shot of the building that was on in the, in the...
Okay.
What's the height of the sign? This, where the sign is?
On the building?
It says CBS, no. In front of it. Standing alone, so...
The latter side.
Oh, the latter side? Yeah, that, that's, it's 14 feet high. Again, that's measured from the road elevation to the very top of the sign itself, and that's within code allowances.
Well... All right, so we believe that addresses the board's concerns towards, towards you talked about having peak roof and architectural enhancements and showing the Five Guys building, so that's, we provide that to the board.
Hard to see this peak here.
I can see it, that's what it is.
How close you get, you lose the sight.
The second issue was that there was, we, we talked about the idea of possibly moving the driveway further north up North Cutland Quarter Road to get it to the top of that knoll or whatever that's there, and what that would look like in the site plan. We have, we have a, a plan that Justin can show that shows the driveway relocated to that, to that area. Also on the same plan, they, just to combine the two things together, the board had also talked about the idea of showing this potential third pad site. And again, I want to be very clear, the project does not include that third pad site. The project is only for the Five Guys and the CBS building. We had, back in 2013, we were asked by the board at that part as part of a planning exercise to show a possible third pad on, on the site. And that really was, at that point, it was just to show that where we were locating the roadways, the internal roadways, that something else could fit on the project. But to be very clear, the project does not include this third, this third site. We, we have, we have a plan that shows where that location would go, shows a building, I think it's 6,000 square feet, Jeff?
Yes, yep.
6,000 square foot building with, with a drive-through potential. Again, it's not part of the project, but we can, we can, going over the plan, going over the specifics of site, we can show how that would fit into the site's infrastructure that we're looking to build on the property.
If it's not part of the project, why are you advertising for it?
Because that, with the advertising that someone mentioned here, that, that's something that realtors do all the time. That's exactly how this site got the way it was, that you first feel out whether there's any interest in the property, and you wouldn't go ahead and spend the money on doing development plans for the site unless you knew there were potential tenants. That's probably how CBS and Five Guys ended up in this site was from advertising like that. That, that will, that will continue, that will continue, but the project now does not include a third pad site.
Talking, talking about the third site?
Yep.
Would you use for the assumption?
We, I could just take...
The town code has, you know, different, different assumptions.
Different assumptions, yeah.
Right, I just want to know which one is used.
So, as Charlie stated, here's the proposed CBS and Five Guys. Our original access point was in this location. What we looked at was pulling it, it's about 220 feet to the north, and that puts you at that knoll that we were speaking about on, on North Buck Horns. So, again, we're, 220 feet removed further from the, the intersection at that point. So, what that did was our original septic design for CBS and Five Guys was in this area, it still remains in that area. The roadway kind of bisects what we had thought would be prior area and reserve for the Five Guys, so those are split on their side of the road and we look to, they both have pump stations, so we look to do the, mostly the further of the two. If there's any need for a reserve area, it's already going near that location, so that could be facilitated. The access, also we included a median area, the county planning thought that, you know, as a, because of the number of lanes and the width of the access point, they thought that with pedestrians coming across there, just to give them a, a safety median or safety island there, we did indicate that on the plan. And then off of that, what we'd be looking to do is, again, a 6,000 square foot building to a two-story, so a 3,000 square foot footprint. We assumed a, a bank first floor and then office space on the second floor. So, based on the town's requirements for parking, a total of 25 parking... So based on the town's requirements for parking, a total of 25 parking spaces. And we haven't incorporated them around the building. Again, it looks like it's a little narrow down here. We did stay out of the front yard setback for parking, drive aisles, things of that nature. It meets all the B2 zoning requirements, and I say that also from a cumulative presentation of the, of the project. So with adding this building, parking, we talk about impervious coverage, things like that, it still falls within the thresholds that are required for the B2 zoning district. Again, with no public utilities available, we would have a proposed well and also a septic. Does move quite far down the, to the north of the site here with separations from some of the wells. But again, it's a schematic to, to show the layout of this potential third pad site, how it kind of worked into the, into the project. It did have, we did represent that it had a drive-through as well being a bank, incorporated that, so.
I think that also addressed the county's comment about in the future to limit the number of curb cuts on North Putt Corners Road. So I think that, you know, was incorporated into that plan, so that would be one point of access to serve everything, so that it wouldn't be additional curb cuts.
Yep.
We also looked at some of the traffic generation figures for this. Again, just without knowing exactly what's going in the air, if you have an idea of traffic, peak hour traffic generation, I think we were looking at in the order of 30 additional trips in, 30 additional trips out roughly in the highest time period. If something else came in, more intensive, it would require an updated traffic study. But again, this is, there's no pen, there's nothing proposed here, so we're really trying to look at, from a planning perspective, what could happen, make sure that the access would work properly, that we, you know, have the entrance located optimally for the entire property. That's pretty much why we went through the exercise here, just to give the board an understanding of what kind of density could be put on there if it ever was developed.
And you mentioned 30 trips in, 30 trips out, is that per day or per hour?
In the highest peak hour. And again, yeah, maybe a little lower because of the office, you know, we inbound in the morning, we're outbound in the afternoon, so that would be the afternoon, PM highway hour that we're talking about.
I have a question about the advertising for the third pad. That is something that you hired a realtor to do that, right? You contracted a realtor?
The site is listed with a broker, it has been for a long time, so the broker is, you know...
It's not just doing it on their own, you said they're doing it on their own, but they're really not doing it on their own.
The broker knows what they would want, what they could do, you know, to make commission. So if they could find another tenant, that's great. But again, you know, I don't know how many times we've stressed this, the project is the two businesses we're showing right now.
Understood, but we have to look at it at its maximum impact, which may not even be what you're going to do. You may put 2,000 square feet there, but we have to look at it as, if you can put 7,000 square feet there, then we can look at it that way, I think, right? Because you're not really presenting us.
Well, I would, I would disagree. I would, and I think that's something you could speak to your attorney and engineering and planning consultants about that. The project before you is the CBS and the Five Guys, that's with the approval that would be given for. If we came back in with a third, with another pad site or another proposal there, the process would start again, and you would have to look at what are the additional impacts from that, what are the new impacts from that, and it would be a different project.
Generally, what we look for in a build-out of a site is that there aren't putting in any impediments to that site that would preclude making general good use out of it. In other words, if they needed another curb cut for the third site, we would say, why wasn't that in the first, in the layout of it? If they, if it was on a sewer system, laying out the pipes or even the stormwater, laying out the infrastructure of the stormwater, to ensure that we're not ripping up something and doing it over again because we want something else in, that the site is laid out to take, the infrastructure is laid out to take into consideration the requirements of everything that would go on to that site. So we don't really get into size-wise, we're really looking at building the infrastructure once for the site to take into account any additions. When you get down to specifics, then you start getting into, does it have enough parking? I think moving the road, moving the exit back to the knoll is an infrastructure improvement that we needed to see to lay it out, to see how the third site could sit on that. But I think that's, to me, that was one of the critical things in the layout of the entire site, was moving that exit off on Putt Corners. So therefore, what can you do or not do in there? I think, again, generally look at the, look at the engineering, but basically the infrastructure of the site to make sure we're not precluding or eliminating something or having to do over something. Drainage. If we have to do something stormwater protection on the site, did we build a retention, if we had built a retention, did we build it big enough or we don't have enough room now to put one in? Those are the kinds of things that we will look at. Kind of right there, that's...
Yep.
So whether it's 6,000, 7,000, 5,000, that's all looked at on its own, but the infrastructure that's being built for the site has to handle anything on the site. If they came back and the thing said 7,000 and we didn't have the infrastructure for it, we could say no, the site wasn't built for it. So you have flexibility on that. Okay, I didn't want to jump in, but I just, I just wanted to let you know why we tend to look at full build-outs of sites to make sure that they can handle that. In other words, if for some reason stormwater wasn't able to be managed on a site due to location, soil conditions or what have you, there might not be a possibility to build anything further on it. And you would say no, that's the limit on it, because you can't, you don't have any place for the stormwater, and you have to meet those requirements.
I have a couple things to discuss with the board, but not with the applicants, so maybe we could just...
Well, let's finish up with the applicant, okay? We're done. Lloyd, have any other?
Just, this may have been asked, or may have been spoken about, but as looking at this rendering, you're bringing enough fill-in where the parking lot is going to be at the same level as the road?
Yes, we're within 18 inches of the road elevation.
Okay, and you're compensating it for the downhill in...
That's correct.
Because here it looks like it's flat all the way around.
I think it's the angle. We're right up at the intersection here. This is the, that's like the stop bar there on North Putt. So this is all, you know, generally at the same level of the street. As you're turning away, going through the slip lane, just outside of the slip lane and going down, that's where like the grade really starts to come down on North Putt. But the CBS pad, the larger of the two, is at 398, that's our finished floor. 400 is roughly where 299 is along that extent, the front edge, so it is, you know, right up, right up with those grades.
Dave, anything? Just Dave?
The queue length and everything improved with moving it down, was there anything else significant about the traffic that was a plus for that?
Yeah, the primary, the primary improvement was that the height, during the highest time period, the queue was extending back within, you know, one car lane of the original location, and even beyond in terms of the 95 percentile queue on peaked hours. So by moving this away, the queue doesn't extend past the driveway. In terms of the changes at 299 in North Putt Corners Road, nothing additional. The DOT's review from June 30th, I think, was their most recent correspondence. I think there were some questions before about looking at other intersections on 299. In our submission in May, on May 14th, that the DOT letter was written in response to, we actually provided them the traffic numbers from Manhite, hallway over to the thruway, so that they could look at the entire system relative to the timing changes that we had proposed at North Putt Corners Road. And their letter of conceptual approval was based on that information. I know there was some comments from the public about, you know, the original study didn't look at that, but we did provide that, and I believe the board was copied on our submission from May 14th to DOT.
You basically went back to Ohioville Road.
Yeah, and we included Ohioville, the ramp, and Cherry Hill. And then we also had it included in that the traffic for Wildberry Lodge. At the time, the numbers that were included were actually a little bit higher than what we ended up with in the Wildberry Lodge study, because it was a bigger project and we were using more generic trip generation. After going through the Wildberry Lodge study, the numbers actually teed down a little in terms of peak hour numbers. So I think the point there is that what was in the analysis that we included for the CBS Five Guys actually had higher background numbers for Wildberry Lodge. And I think that we had addressed that originally in our May 20th submission to the board.
I think the other thing about moving the driveway back is also gives the people coming, exiting the site, a lot of many times, on traffic coming to up and south on Putt Corners, even though it's 45 for miles an hour.
Improved site distance, right?
Yes, that's correct. I think we, I don't know if we have it labeled on the plan, but we improved the site distance over 150 feet to 144.
Okay. Is there anything new with the county and the state in trying to figure out what's up?
Well, the only question that we've had left with the DOT, they were very specific about that we had to maintain the shoulder width along 299. It's, again, this was the June 30th letter. We had prepared a plan in response to the request of the bike lane treatment, the, you know, placement of that relative to the inside, the outside of the trap lane versus the outside of the shoulder. So our plan and what they responded to in terms of conceptual approval didn't specify which scenario they wanted. I think that the town had some preference. So, you know, that's still an open item. I think your consultant was going to reach out to them just for clarification, and we'll do what's either planned. You know, we drew it up either way, and that was the only item that we felt was still open relative to that. On the county, I think the only remaining comment was that coming up North Putt Corners Road, we needed to grade everything out to allow for a future bike lane along North Putt Corners, but we hadn't gotten anything further as far as I know on that.
And that's still...
So that's still part of the plan, the improvements are still part of the plan.
Well, I think from our perspective, and I heard some of it tonight, I think we need this all rolled up into a package. I don't think there's anything overly new, but there were some, some issues that were raised here, that's why I asked about it. I think you need to roll this all up and be responsive to that, to the issues. I think I need a master of the site plan showing the traffic, the exit change, the third pad shown on that, basically a diagram on that. And so that we can, I'll put, bring it all together, what we have, what your responses to the public have been raised, the responses to the board has been raised, and to address as best you can, we need your responses for the section on it.
It's also hard, when we get these documents after the meeting, it's kind of difficult for us to get them before, so that we can review them beforehand, hopefully can see them.
Understood, particularly with the red degree, we're at, you know, the mercy of the architect, that Justin and I both have, we had many heated conversations with the lower the last two weeks to try to get that plan sooner, and it showed up today, so...
Well, obviously, we need this kind of information, like Gusta said, so we can review it, people can review it, and I would propose that we give us and the public a chance to review it and put you on a September 28 meeting, with the idea that the documentation you would bring to us would come in September 12th, 9th, Friday, or the following Monday, 13th, whatever it is, 14th. And that would give the board two weeks to review, to the people that come in, and two weeks to take a look at it, for a public hearing, and then we'll discuss our secret process.
Before we make any determinations about that, can we just, can I have my discussion with the board about things that I want to talk about?
Yeah, I think before with the act, well, I'm doing it, okay?
Great, great, great.
Okay.
So the anticipation is that we'll wrap all this up into one submission with the, you know, our responses to the public comments, get that to the board, and then the idea is that the public hearing can then be closed on the 28th of September?
We gotta, if we do your half, we'll try to do our half on that. I just want to finish this up, and then we can...
Site design will be completed by then?
Which?
We've talked several months ago about some changes to the stormwater and...
Well, we have changed the access, and we'd like to get that into with this third pad site plan, it's a schematic or a concept plan at that level that we'd like to get in and have reviewed, because it would entail additional revisions to stormwater.
One of the problems, one of the problems that Dave's hitting on is it's difficult to do, seek a determination of concept plans.
But the concept plan is also based on a third pad site, not part of the application.
Still, you have to do...
I mean, we're just...
I know what you're saying.
No, I just want to just be clear too from the board, that the concept level, what we presented for the third pad site is to the detail that we'd be presenting. You know, we're not doing full stormwater design and septic design for this potential pad site, correct?
Well, actually, that's what I want to discuss in our discussion, if we can discuss things before we finish discussing.
Let, let, what really needs to take a look at, I just, this is being stretched out.
I mean, here we go, we're in this, this was necessary as far as looking at this other site, and I certainly hope you adopt this, but I also hope that you get into the design on it, so we can move this process along.
The design of what, though?
I need to know that the drainage is going to work.
For?
That you're actually going to do.
For the Five Guys and the CBS, correct?
Yes.
Whatever you have to do for the northern part there, if anything. You know, it has to be independent, Five Guys and CBS has got to be independent. Anything that would be needed by the other side that isn't included in the site design is just going to slow us down, to make sure it's...
Okay, we do have some confusion, and we're, again, we're not... Okay, we do have some confusion and we're not proposing this third pad site. We have a full set of site plan, plans in, to the planning board that has the Five Guys and the CBS. This plan we showed here, this concept plan of the third pad site was just for the board's, you know, to education, to show a third site could go here, but we're not looking for the approval of that third site. So we're not looking to do the design of that third site.
I don't have a final design of this site without that third.
Correct. All right, so you're saying there's other stuff missing, just about the CBS and the Five Guys.
And obviously changing the roadway in there, we'll change the numbers on it. That's what he needs, that's what we're trying to get to.
That's, okay, okay.
Okay.
Understood.
Okay.
Okay, I'm into this question.
Yep.
Okay, I have two things. So first of all, and I just want to discuss this with ourselves so we can just be clear.
Can me be discussed?
You know, I took this, we had this little agreement to go through all my notes, go through everything, and I see absolutely no way we can make any determination of significance without taking into account the third site, and here's why. It completely changes the parcel to have all this fill, all this tree removal, and then to say, oh, we'll just figure out what's going on with the third site later. We have to make a determination based on the totality of the site. We can't just forget about it. I mean, it just seems insane to me and we can't change it back once it's changed. We can't, like, our purpose under seeker is to take a hard look at everything. That's not a hard look if you don't look at the full site. Okay, that's my first point. I just don't see how we can do anything further without having a revised EAF and a revised traffic study that takes that into account. I mean, I've read through everything, I also have tons of problems with the EAF, the part one that I think we need to talk about, that we haven't really discussed, that all these modifications that we wanted to have.
Just into that third site, just so we can, like, just get them with that one thing. I agree with Gusta and the reason I agree is if they would agree to say we're not going to do anything for five years on that third site, but they're actually actively advertising it.
Yeah.
And that's what makes me uncomfortable because they're looking for a tenant. So if they get one in six months, then they're going to have things that they're going to be before us, and that's where the segmentation part bothers me.
And it's fun for them to say it's two different applications, but it's the same, environmentally, it's the same area, it has the same impacts. So I think it just, I don't know why, this just seems obvious.
Slow down a bit. From a infrastructure point of view, what's proposed for the site, whether it's one building or three buildings, what you want to build into the, quote, infrastructure is the ability to handle all of it.
Exactly.
So the extent that you can surmise that the third site has this potential impervious surface, it would increase the drainage or the stormwater management plan by X, Y, and the site has the capability to handle that. Okay? But you don't have to build that because that third site isn't there. In other words, you have the capability of keeping all the stormwater onsite below whatever level it is. You have enough land to do that.
I think what I'm saying, I just think everything has to reflect that. The EAF has to reflect that in traffic, like, you know.
We have, well, to the extent that these have, you know, additional impacts, specifically additional impacts, and we can pinpoint where they have the additional impact, that we've addressed or we've talked about it. I think of a water and sewage, it's, there's room on that site, showing a diagram and a conceptual thing that they can put in their own separate septic field.
Yeah, but we also have to consider the traffic.
Well, yeah, let's do it one at a time, right? These are the things that you, from a conceptual point of view, does it have the capabilities? When you're analyzing traffic, is the, where are they now and does the incremental traffic of a third site, what kind of impact does that have? And does it fall into one category or another category?
Question. A hypothetical situation, we know they're advertising that other pad site. We approve a site plan as a planning board for the two locations and eight months later, before the building is completed, there's no CO, what alternatives are there then? What happens with the course of that? Because a tendency is when normally when a building like this and then they're actively trying to find the third tenant, you build two, you have two anchors, another one will definitely follow behind. So eight months into the project, they have a third tenant. What will they have to do in order to come back and have that third tenant approved?
Well, a couple of things. One, if you, say we did an assumption of 6,000 square feet, we did from a water and sewage point of view, we considered a bank and an office building, so it had minimal water usage, and to the extent that it had a traffic pattern that was similar to what we assumed before, you could say you've already, they fell into that category and you've looked at it and can go along with it. Think of that with something different on it and all of them will go through that approval. You could come up with, say, hey, look, this site can't handle that project, that, maybe they want to put a car wash in there and it has a huge amount of water usage. And you could deny the project because it's not capable of handling that because of what you're asking for, unless you come back and show over and above what you had in there generically assumed. We're going to have assumptions in there, the development of the third site, under these categories. It's size-wise, traffic assumptions, water and sewage assumption, groundwater, stormwater issues. There'll be things in this that assume that any addition would fit into this kind of generic, and to the extent that they don't, you're on site plan approval and you can say, no, this thing cannot be put there. You can't have a, you know, something else.
Well, could I make a proposal, which is that we, instead of having these public hearings where everyone comes and, you know, says, not the same things because there's new things every time, but can we just keep the public hearings open, ask the applicant to revise the EAF to take into account the whole parcel and just wait for this flow of information to catch up to us before we go any further? That's my first, you know what, I was going to make that motion.
Well, why don't we, why don't we, in the conceptual plan that shows the third parcel, attach a revised EAF in part one, and what we'll do is we'll look at it and start our, when we do the part two, we'll take that into account.
Okay, speaking of, okay, well, wait, let's finish with that. Okay, do we need to make a motion though or no?
No, we don't, we just, they're still here having a good time with us.
Okay.
So what we'll be looking for is in that conceptual plan, a revised EAF taken into account, their revised construction. So we can document that, yes, we've taken into account and here revised one shows a 6,000 square foot site, 30 cars, big time, water and sewage septic fields, a well and septic field is put in, and from a conceptual point of view, the amount of impervious surface would contribute X amount.
Okay, so then it seems we also need to take and revise the traffic study, which I think needs to be totally redone because I still haven't been satisfied with the fact that the person, the firm that did the traffic study also works for CBS.
No, he doesn't.
Well...
No, he doesn't.
All right, so six to one, half a dozen on the other.
No, he doesn't.
So anyway, but at least, at the very least, revising it to include that information about the third pad site.
We can ask our consultant to take into account what the additions will contact with the applicant to find out, you know, based on, those numbers revised and based on that, what it adds to the traffic counts on peak and what that means. Because again, the split will be the same, probably the same way that it has the split coming out of the exit now.
It's like we have to know.
You just said 30 and 20 will go this way and 10 will go that, okay, but we can do that, that's fairly straightforward. Ask our traffic consultant to contact with the applicant and then ask for the traffic consultant, our traffic consultant, give us a revised impacts of the third site.
Can I just talk about the design for a second? Okay, go ahead.
The traffic consultant's going to need to know what type of space to look at.
We're going with the bank and the office space on top of them. And then suggested 30, again, this is the concept we have for it. I mean, we can, you know, 90 Ways to Sunday, it'd be something else, but...
So the design of the building, you know, I feel like it's only inching their way each time. They're like throwing us a bone, they put a couple of bricks on, they put a couple of stones on, they put a roof that, I can't even find the peak on that roof. And they are, I mean, it's like a pancake roof that they put on top of this. It is, from what I hear from the public, even though there's 100 concerns, one of the major concerns is driving in and seeing that CBS, the standard one that they see. I see so many nice CVSs. We've sent them pictures, they have roofs with real peaks, they have signs on little wooden plaques. There's one in Southampton that even has CBS in a small black lettering. I mean, why are they inching their way to, I would be much happier, you know, it's not going to, probably even cost that much more for them to hand us a design with something that is more compatible to New Pauls, more compatible to what we want to see. So that, that's a big deal, I think.
I think I have, I have an issue at the end of the meeting that Amy brought it up and was going to discuss with the board on that. Whole subject, okay?
Okay, my last point is I'm just confused about, we received this weird EAF part two that was kind of filled out, I think, by George, that I'm so, like, to my mind, we're not there at all, not to mention that that's our responsibility to fill out, and I've never seen anything like that. Like, what is the deal with that?
I like George.
It's kind of was discussed at the meeting, but I never heard it discussed.
I like George.
It's like our work has been done, I don't know why, I'm very confused, okay.
Well, I'm not sure if there are criticisms, but we certainly had discussion.
I haven't not been in meetings since...
Well, then you probably did hear the discussion.
Okay, all right.
I may not have made it clear to you, but it was discussion about taking the EAF form and trying sort of a trio to identify the issues that...
I do know, but I'm just not sure that it's the responsibility of our lawyer to highlight everything color-wise when we haven't even discussed it.
We, no, it was a, something to put on the table to discuss.
Okay.
Okay, we haven't discussed it, you're right.
Okay.
And we haven't discussed it yet and somebody has to put something down for a piece of paper to start the discussion.
Okay.
So that was the intent of that.
Yeah, the discussion I thought we had was that I would consult Dave, prepare something for you to review, which intended to identify things where we felt there were not extensive open issues or where they could be readily resolved, like the geology. The ones that we clearly know are of great importance to the board and will be reviewed in detail, which were what I identified as pink and red ones. And then the sort of middle ground, where there are issues and perhaps information that needs to be provided, but where there seems to be a way to come to closure without a great deal of additional information, additional discussion. Just going through those and just, you know, those can be resolved, but that was intended as a teaching, not to say this is the way to fill this out.
So the intent is similar to what we've done, our point is to take a number of the highlight ones.
Well, I broke it down into groups and we had our separate groups and we met, but that was us, so, all right.
Yeah, well, that's the intent, that was the first step of the attempt to stop breaking it down into groups.
Gotcha.
Okay, so that's work in progress, we've still got ways to go. Okay? All right, let me move on to...
Oh, yeah, add something. If they make the roof more pitched, it would make it higher, basically, so it looks like we're already looking at about 26, 28 foot above finished grade and if you see the roof more, it doesn't mean the building looks less massive, it just breaks it up. And it's not like that I'm a supporter of flat roofs, I'm just pointing out that you're trading off, like, to get a steep roof, you'd be getting a more massive appearance. From driving on a flat, say you're coming in 299 and you try and get a bigger pitch, you're going to see that building more, you're going to be sticking up, coming down 299, you're going to be sticking up in front of the view of Bonneville or something like that, I don't know. I don't know exactly, but I'm just saying.
Did you see this? But it's only kind of pitched a little bit higher.
No, but what's missing in that picture is sort of almost like a second story. They have about 18, 20 feet to that facade, top of the facade, or the E now, so you don't have that on there, you've got like maybe 12, something like that. So I mean, there are alternatives, but just pitching the roof won't make the difference.
Maybe they could plant some of the five acres of trees they're cutting down on top of the roof.
Okay, all right. We have, next up on our agenda is LP Builders, I told you we have nothing from them. I, we proposed, knowing what the schedule looks like for the September meeting and their request for two months, is to propose to move the public hearing for LP Builders out to the October 14th meeting. That would give him a month and more, almost two months to get something in, with the caveat, if we don't get anything in, is George, what's the proper words I have to use if I don't get anything in by then?
Devil.
I have a question, because I'm still feeling it from the board. I've been going after a long time and, I mean, and I guess it's okay if they need more time, but it's also costing, I'm sure, them a lot of money to keep dragging this along and maybe it's cost them a lot before this. There's no such thing, it's like getting like a feel for how this is going with the board before he's, now he's hiring another lawyer and he has to go through the whole thing, all the way to the end, bless him. I mean, do you know what I'm saying? It just seems that he's spending so much money and our time and the neighbor's time to get an idea before he costs them another $50,000 or $60,000.
But we have that free conceptual, you know, start...
Just a question, maybe there's nothing we can do until it goes to the end, but maybe, you know, we can give some kind of feeling to him how this is going, like, you know?
I think the problem is we need more information.
He said, I mean, I think he's given us a lot of information.
Yeah.
You know, where are you, Dave?
There's still a list of maybe 10 items that he had been asked for before that we haven't seen yet, and I think that's the new engineer supposed to provide that.
So the new engineer was in, looking at where the plans were, I think, giving them to October 14th, hence this however... This is however busy September one, and gives the engineer adequate time to do it. If we don't get anything in, now his due date to get stuff in for that is September twenty-third, and our meeting is September twenty-eighth, we'll know where we are for that project then and there. But I agree with you, we just went on way, way too long.
Are we okay with the escrow?
I think so, escrow account is, I checked with the board, what the dollars are. Okay.
So do we need a motion on that, or are we pushing back the calendar?
Yeah, let's make a motion. Make a motion to continue the public hearing on LP Builders due October fourteenth.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Abstain from that.
Fair enough. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, Lou? You can pull up another chair, I mean. Okay, we were up, I was up to county. Your application was on the beginning of the August meetings, county, county came up with a couple of modifications and requested you incorporate. And we wrote back, we wrote back. So. When I go to county, I'm not just to say anything. So whatever goes on, goes on, and I just listen. But they talked about storage on site, and I knew you wanted to say store on site.
We added a note, I'm not sure if you already had the note. Unfortunately, I and Liam can't be with us, but there's a note on here that there's no landscape materials to be stored on site.
Okay, and they asked for some screening.
We added precipia.
Okay, on that side.
And rubber bench.
Okay, and then we went back and we had a, in the back of the package. And what I'm going to do, since George just commented on the impact, and I think it's overstated what the impact is of easements and rights of way on it.
I have the sidewalk easement for you all, I have the language and I have a sign, I have a copy for everyone.
Okay.
There's two parts to it, and this is the one part of it.
Okay.
It's the language that I got from George.
George?
Okay.
Which I reviewed myself. Need to review yourself. The town attorney has to.
Yep, it was totally fine.
Okay, so between you and George, where are we on this?
Well, the applicant has, I think, a concern about losing the frontage, I just checked with Dave. Right now, the property is subject to a highway easement. So for the width of the use, it is subject to the highway use that the county has. The municipality.
The municipality in that part of the road.
The applicant's concern is that by moving the front yard boundary line back twenty-five feet, it will make the front lot, the front yard not conforming. I think that's accurate, but I think it's also not that different from practically where it is now. Since the county does have the right of use over it, there's no use to be made of that easement area.
A win.
But overall, I would say if the applicant is declining to review it, given that there is a concern about the front yard impact. So dedication is made, then the applicant's structure would be thirty feet.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine feet from the boundary line, which may be relevant to signage or something else that's going to be located in the front yard.
But the app, let me see, the town has, from the center line of the road, how much, fifteen?
They're probably using fifteen to twenty feet. I think the road width there, half the road width is about ten, there's another five in strange or probably more than five. So it might be, it's someplace between fifteen to twenty feet is being used from the center line of the road into the property.
Don't we have some rule always that if something's already non-conforming, to not make it more non-conforming?
That's always, always a goal.
But if we're dealing with a situation where the sidewalk easement is hypothetical, like the tenant might not even be there by the time that would ever come to pass. And we could, I don't know, it just seems like it's something that we could work out at some point in the future if there was ever a sidewalk easement.
Yeah.
If we had a sidewalk easement, we're not going to use full fifteen feet. I mean, it's unlikely.
Right.
I mean, that's just my.
So.
So you have the sidewalk easement. Sidewalk easement, then happy for the sidewalk easement. No problem.
No problem with the sidewalk easement?
No, people can walk by.
Okay.
I mean, I think a letter is pretty convincing, it just seems like it's.
But the thing is, it might affect the value of your property in terms of resale.
Wish.
Say if you had, if you had the sidewalk easement, and then somebody, you were going to sell the property and somebody would go and buy it and do something else with it, then that might, still out there.
To me, it's less of an issue, I mean, I'm, you know, proposing putting in a big gravel parking lot, so I feel like if someone were to purchase, I don't think that anyone will ever want to live in this site. Whether I actually obtain this property and develop it into a commercial site for office use or not, I think that the house is not really viable as a residence any longer. There's a lot of chainsaw noise right next door.
And dust.
There's, and dust, it's, you know.
Sewer's treatment.
Sewer's treatment across the way, then on a hot day.
Commercial garage to the south.
Commercial garage.
It's not desirable.
Yeah, you've got big greenhouses, the tieback up. I think it's really pretty perfect for us, and I don't think that anyone will want to purchase it to go back to a residence.
So do we have any issues here?
The drainage was looked at and taken care of, there's going to be a swale on the north property line to collect the water and take it down to the street, so that works.
Is it possible to show a line which would be the limit of highway? Which would not be, would be confirming where the highway meets the property center. It would be useful to our setback in future.
This line is going to be most attention that I think we've had a planning board meeting. There's only one line.
Oh, this line.
He's tormenting everybody.
Yeah, the public commentators. So is this line right here, I'm sorry that I don't have a lead with me who prepared these plans. She couldn't make it, but is this the line of twenty-five feet from center of road that you're asking about, assumed highway right of way?
Yes.
It's right here on this, this first page. I'm sure it carries you. Okay, there's a little bit. Yeah, which is beyond the existing. I didn't see them. Well, the next two, they all have lighting and then a lamp.
See, my guess is that that line lines up with these two, where they found the pipe. Kind of makes sense.
Yeah, it does.
What I think, I mean, this is, this is not the only property with this kind of issue where there's land underneath the highway.
Yeah.
Where you typically would have a boundary at the highway right of way, but because of the way these highways evolved, it goes beyond. It may be something appropriate to consider, maybe the zoning to say, when this situation exists, a setback line will be measured from the highway right of way. So you treat it effectively the same way, notwithstanding it would be a home. For zoning purposes, the setback is taken from the area that can actually be used. So if you have a blank piece of property and the property is twenty-five feet out of the new road, you're saying that first twenty-five feet doesn't count because it's subject to highway use. After that, it's like every other property that stops at the edge of the highway. So you measure back from that point. And I think we have the power to, the town has the power to do that. That may be a more generic solution that you might want to consider. Because I know on highway, that's come up a number of times. And I suspect if you look, the boundary line is.
Go underneath the road in the middle of it.
Your neighbors on each side have pipes set on that boundary. They believe that the highway line is their property line. That was found by the surveyor that did this property, which is interesting. So properties on either side believe that their property goes out to the twenty-five feet off of the.
Oh, so they go out to.
Yeah, which is very interesting. You may be the, one of the few properties that go out that far to the road.
Yeah.
There may have been dedication in the past that didn't catch this problem. Somebody believes the property line is where those pipes are. Those pipes were set, in fact, this one is capped, so we could find out who set that one.
But for this, for this issue, I like to close out, what do we, what do we want to show on this thing?
I think what I was just talking to Dave about is adding a note that says limit of highway use to that point there which is still on, but that would indicate that's what it's being used for, which is, I believe, what it's being used for. So for future purposes, if the town sets a setback from the limit of highway use, I'll repeat the marking that point, and the town can set setbacks from that point instead of the property.
There's drainage structures in, in front of that, you really don't own those. You'd rather have the town own those so they can maintain them.
Yes, absolutely. My main concern is putting up a sign, and if we set our property line that far back or if the town does change its code and I say that this is the limit of, I'm not sure exactly what you just said, limit of town use.
Limit of town highway use.
Then I won't be able to have a sign in my front yard since it is such a non-conforming lot and the house is already pretty close to the road.
The boundary would still be out there in the road.
It would be, oh, so it would still be coming off that line. But you just proposed a change in the code that would be more generic, that would affect me.
I think the town has to consider this.
Yeah.
Which may or may not, it would affect you, but isn't a ten-foot setback.
This is a fifty-foot setback from the I-1, and they've got about thirty, a little less than thirty.
If you have a sign.
It's a ten-foot setback from the property line, which they're okay right now with where you want to put it with your line out there in the road. And put it back farther as you were saying.
But if you use that highway line, that would still allow ten feet from the road.
If we use the highway line, then we can come ten feet back.
You have thirty feet right now in your front yard, you would have thirty feet from this highway line. You would need ten feet from that to push the sign. So the sign would be twenty feet from there.
I'm sorry, can we say that one more time? If, if we're coming off which line then?
If you take the highway line to.
Which is this one.
Which is this one, assumed highway, R O W on our plan right now, yeah.
If you use that as the point from which you measure setback. You can have a sign that's going to set back ten feet from that line.
So what was the fifty, but that was something different than you mentioned?
Fifty feet is from your property line.
That's the building setback.
Okay.
Correct. It's like the center of your sign would move toward the house about seven feet. Let me level that.
If you use existing sign, I don't think it would have to move.
So like that?
Is there a broken sign?
No, that's, that's way, that's the wrong direction. That's too close to the road.
George, would there be a problem with having the sign in the sidewalk easement until the town actually takes possession of that?
So it's kind of why it's fifteen, so we can miss trees and anything else.
I mean, it would, it doesn't seem like it would be a problem if you had the sign in the sidewalk easement until such time in the future that they would ever want to use that.
That the sidewalk actually.
You know, I don't think it, that way you could be closer to where you would know there's a sign.
Am I allowed to go that close?
I don't, I don't know what the sign line is.
It's ten feet off the property line, if you don't change the property line, you're okay the way you are. So what's your plan?
That's why I was.
That's a picture of the road and the grass there. And then where the broker has the sign like that. That's probably too close to the broker, I suspect good feedback, right?
That's too close, that's almost in the ditch.
Yeah, that's too, that's too.
That's much too close, where the broker was. Just trying to get a sense of it, right?
Yeah.
So the note that you wanted added, George, was highway line for use, for town use. Wait, what was it? Was that what it was, highway line for town use?
That's fine.
Yeah? And it sounds like that won't actually really affect my, until the code of New Paltz changes.
We want them to have four lane highway through there.
Yeah.
Then.
Then you, yeah.
Then they'll have to drive under my sign. It'll be a bridge.
By the end of all, so.
Right, okay. We can add that note.
All right, there you go, we got it figured out. Dave, you said?
There was one question about the county comment that screening for future, and I gave some lines to you and Dave to consider which will allow that to be approved by the building inspector if it was proposed. But right now, are you proposing anything but storage of, storage, not parking, but storage of equipment, vehicles, or materials on your site?
No, because the vehicles are in and out each day, so that's not considered storage, or that is?
No.
So no.
Putting it in containers or.
No.
So what the county said is that no storage appears to be proposed, which you're saying is true. But if there is future storage, that'd be screened. So instead of having the planning board go through another round of reviewing whatever storage you propose, my suggestion was if the building inspector, after consulting with the engineer, they determine the visual noise would be screened by whatever you propose, be authorized to issue the permits for that to happen. And then the plan would have a note to that effect.
Since we already have screening put in for the parking.
You're saying if we, if we add later, then it'll be part, it'll be connected to anything we want to add.
Would be reviewed by the building inspector.
Yes.
So incidental use, less than ten percent, what I, here was the number, was ten percent of the area of parking, which is half an acre, like that. So it's about twenty-three thousand, twenty thousand feet.
That's it.
Twenty plus.
I'll just say yes.
So ten percent of that, anything that's under two thousand would be approvable by the building inspector without the planning board meeting.
Sounds good tonight.
Okay. I think we're ready to have a motion to approve the Bloom.
Should we make a condition?
Yeah, we're gonna make a motion for, for the site plan approval to the Bloom Landscape Fine Garden site application on 25 North Ohioville Road.
With the determination, this is a type 2 action, advised by the engineer.
Okay, we'll have to do that first. First, we're going to prepare this as a type 2 action on the Seaker.
4,000, 4,000 square feet of commercial.
Okay, it's less than 4,000 square feet of commercial. So therefore, Seaker determination is not required on it. So I'll make a motion for type 2 action on the Bloom Landscape Design Site Plan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion for site plan approval to the Bloom Landscaping Site.
I'll second it.
I'll do subject to...
Subject to the following conditions.
We have a sheet.
I got a sheet, man. I haven't written anything. But George is writing it on.
That's my fault.
It was just the...
No storage on site. Subject to no storage on site and screening of, what are we screening?
And a screening of the parking.
If no storage, it would be less than the 10 percent storage, right?
In fact, it's acceptable, I'll circulate it to the applicant. To your professional.
What was that?
I'll circulate the note to you and your professional.
Thank you.
Okay, so the note has to do with the storage on site.
I propose now 10 percent in the future, subject to the building inspector review.
And then I think we've met the requirements of the county for the screening and for the modification of the drainage on the left side of the site. Okay. Got the motion, we know what it is?
The, the, to not, regarding the sidewalk easement and the highway line.
Right.
So they've submitted this, and somebody has to accept it, or the town, or the district?
Well, the easement just basically shows on a...
The easement will be done on the plan.
On the plan.
And the plan will also have a note referring to the line as the limit of town highway use, or whatever Dave said.
Whatever Dave said.
Highway line for town use.
Sounds good.
Wait.
Okay.
I'll second that. Did you make the motion?
No.
Okay, so we have a motion, the site plan approval. We have a condition on storage, and of 10 percent, George will give her the note for the, for the map. We have a note for the sidewalk easement, a condition upon the center line of the, or the highway line, Dave.
Highway, we're going for town use. Highway for public use.
Highway for public use.
Note, show it on the map. That's the motion.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
You get those guys, get the map, notes changed, come around, most times, just give them up to Kelly and I'll give them a sign.
Do we bring copies? We do more than one?
Kelly, site plan. How many map, what's?
One for the building park, one for the town park, one for us, and as many as we want. So we need three plus however many we need.
The mileage of subdivision, they go up to Kelly.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Does it take the call if you run into anything on this? I know you've got kind of a deadline, so.
Yep.
We want to work with you to get there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Okay, I lost all my pieces of paper. Couple things I got on the administrative end of things. We've received, at, at county, which county planning board meeting, the shop right application was reviewed, number of things were noted on it, the county required, required modifications. Subsequent to that...